Hello, everybody. Jean Thomas Shiro here, sovereign Hawaiian national in my own country. I know where I woke up this morning, and I also know where everybody else woke up this morning. So mahalo to Matt for Resolution 678-20. We all sovereign-minded people, even the corporate citizen slaves actually support this. But I like what's written here except for one part. It says, "Calls upon all telecommunications companies and public utilities operating in Hawaii County." Love you, Matt, but I am not in Hawaii County. Hawaiian Kingdom Kohaui Pae Aina in continuity. But it carries on, "To cease the build-out of 5G wireless infrastructure." Yes, indeed. "Until such technologies have been proven through independent research and testing to be safe to human health and the environment." Everything there looks pono. It looks good, however, as a matter of correction in truth and the law, we not in Hawaii County. Now, why is that important? Because Hawaii County is a corporation. It is a subdivision of the state of Hawaii Corporation, a subdivision of the United States Corporation, established 1871, District of Columbia. This is relevant because I heard some people saying that we cannot protect ourselves from 5G on health reasons. Now, I don't know where in the corporate infrastructure somebody was paid to say, "You're not allowed to protect yourself in the name of health." My God, that's some crazy stuff, isn't it? Corporate presumptions, color of law. We would go ahead so much further for pono and lawful remedy if people would just address the elephant in the room. Actually, you've all addressed the elephant in the room because every resentment, not just myself, but many others have made, declaring the fact that Hawaiian Kingdom is in continuity. It is not a corporation. It is a constitutional monarchy under the Creator's law. Be truthful, do no harm, and honor your word. So we're all continuing to do our very best for lawful remedy. Somebody out there, you know where you woke up this morning, asked the simple question. It will go very far to helping us, helping us gain the standing and the truth and the status and the law that is our birthright. So coming up Friday, July 31st, 2020, at 6:00 PM at Kukua Studio, we're going to talk about this again. Mahalo to Matt, Deborah Green, Jack Ebner, Micah Sun-Eagle, and myself, Jean Thomas Shiro. We're going to say no to 5G. We're going to say no to the COVID-19 lockdown pandemic, forced vaccination, and all these other color-of-law mandates that require full disclosure and substantive due process. God bless you, and I bless everybody. Aloha.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas Shiro. Konah, your next testifier.
Next testifier is Carolyn Pellet, in support of Resolution 678-20. State your name for the record and continue, please.
Yes, my name is Carolyn Pellet, and I live in Waikato Village. And we are surrounded by technology. But first, I want to just thank Mr. Konalee Kleinfeldter for holding this because I watched the council meetings, and he and I think it was Rebecca were the only two people that said, "Hey, our constituents don't want this." So I don't know that much. All I know is that technology has gone awry and that there's no humanity in the kind of technology that we have now. And that includes more than 5G. But tell me, there isn't going to be 5G involved in the TMT? It's involved in everything. It's the military-industrial complex. And I didn't hear the last man's testimony per se, but it is. It's all clothed. It's the elites, it's the corporations and the military. And anything that makes money or anything they can make money off of, that's it. And so many of the ideologies are racist to begin with. And in these days where that's been brought to our attention and that police officers who are not responsible are not even surveilled, that's not what they're going to be using the 5G for. They're going to be surveilling all of us and cornering all of us and probably genociding a lot of us in reality. So I think I'm crazy. It's okay with me. I want to find out more specifically about the 5G, but I just know we don't want it. It is inhumane.
Thank you, Ms. Pellet.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pellet. Our testifier here in Hilo, go ahead.
Okay, next up, we have Barbara Garcia.
Aloha, I'm Barbara Garcia. I'm a resident of the county of Hawaii. I'm in support of Resolution 678-20. Mahalo, Matt, Konalee Kleinfeldter. I really am grateful for this and for the other things that you've been bringing up to our community. I own a local publishing company that I operate from my home. I'm in Puna. I purchased my home in 2018, and I had no internet there for over a year. For that whole year, I published my magazine using the hotspot on my cellphone, the 3G hotspot on my cellphone. It was inconvenient. Had I known I wasn't going to have internet when I bought my home, I probably would not have bought it. But in the end, I was glad I did because I love my home and I love where I live. And I found out that I was able to work using the hotspot on my phone. So that proved to me that we don't need 5G. It's possible to do what we need to do with the technology that we already have. I've watched and read enough studies now by doctors and scientists that prove to me that 5G is not safe. It's not safe for us or our future generations. And I'm really appreciating this time that we are having the opportunity to stop, you know, to pause and to do the research necessary to make sure that we're doing the right thing and that we're not doing it for the wrong reasons. When I heard Donna Herbst do her testimony earlier, it really surprised me because it's the first time I've heard anyone speaking about that "we" sound. And I have spoken with some people about it because I started hearing it when I lived in Hilo a few years ago. And I thought for sure when I moved out to Puna that it would stop. And it didn't stop. And the few people that I talked to, you know, were trying to tell me it was all in my head. So I kind of haven't talked much about it. But when I heard Donna mention it, it just gave me confirmation that there is more going on here that we know about or than we know, excuse me. So I really appreciate this conversation, and I support doing more research on this and stopping the progress of 5G here on the island. Mahalo.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Let's take our testifying, Konah.
Our next testifier is Naomi Melamed, in support of Resolution 278-0.
Aloha, and mahalo to you all for your time today. And thank you to Councilmember Konalee Kleinfeldter for enabling this important discussion. I represent Keep Your Power, a Hawaii-based coalition representing residents. We work collaboratively with local government and are connected to a web of national and international organizations to educate against the dangers of wireless radiation and advocate for safe technology. In Maui, for example, we'll be holding our second panel on 5G for the council members. This one will be on health, safety, and cultural impacts of 5G. The first one was regarding legal issues, and they're in the beginning stages of planning a protective 5G ordinance for Maui County. In uncertain times of COVID, our representatives have the unique challenge, you all, and thank you for this, to ease public fear. We do not need another alarming factor like 5G added to the mix. We deserve to know without a doubt what effects this new technology will have on our lives and that of the Aina. Distance learning, work, and staying connected while at home are all made possible by fiber optic. 5G relies on fiber optic. It is its backbone. So why not continue that cable to the home and close the digital divide? Anyone that states that 5G can close the digital divide is misleading us. 5G is faster than fiber is faster than 5G by orders of magnitude. So I already have fiber wired into my home. I can testify, in rural North Kohala, it is possible. It's inexpensive, and it's pretty hard to beat the speed of light. Unlike fiber, 5G is susceptible to weather and environmental factors, like many other testifiers. I won't go into the independent research of tens of thousands of scientists and doctors, which is supported by a large body indicating the health effects and environmental. Let's join hundreds of other US communities by laying fiber and set the Big Island up for a successful future. 5G is expected to expire after 10 years. Then we will be on to more charges and difficult choices. 5G supports corporate interests. Fiber is for the people. Data is the next oil. 5G's true purpose is to capture unimaginable amounts of data. Do we really need 5G-enabled baby diapers? At what cost? We need to know. What are the risks? Total surveillance, capitalism, and now I'm talking about security and privacy, you know, has major questions in the 5G world. As far as the hands being tied, I want to urge you out of fear. Congress has preserved the power of local governments to regulate the placement of 5G facilities. We must close the divided understanding here that providing safety is very different from proving something is safe is very different from insufficient evidence indicating dangers. We need to close this gap of understanding. Thank you. Let's close the digital divide. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Ms. Melamed. Moving on to our next testifier here in Hilo.
Our next testifier is Jackie Gomes. Gomes, I'm sorry. Aloha, eh, Hawaii County Council Planning Committee. O Jackie Gomes, ko'ouli nua, hekumu au, hemaku'a hine'a. My name is Jackie Gomes, and I am a teacher and a mother, and I am a proud resident of Hawaii County. I humbly come before you today in support of the resolution to stop deployment of 5G in Hawaii. With over 10,000 peer-reviewed articles, it would be negligent on our behalf to ignore the science and the facts outlining the dangers of 5G on human health. Along with over 200 top scientists from around the world who have voiced their concerns with the United Nations, I too have been studying this for over a year, and I believe that the advancement of technology should never take precedence over human health. We call out fake news because of its lack of scientific backing and studies, yet we can sit here and blatantly ignore the concerns of educated and well-versed individuals locally and around the world. Our keiki, kapuna, and kanaka have worked diligently to build and maintain a sustainable economy. 5G will not only ruin what makes Hawaii Island beautiful with the excessive construction of towers, but will also cause irreversible long-term damage to the health and well-being of the people. The numbers don't lie. The areas locally with the most active towers and deployment of 5G have had a significantly larger number of COVID cases. I was awakened to this fact last summer on my trip to Oahu, where there were numerous towers around every corner, whether camouflaged or obvious. Let me be clear. I am not saying that 5G is the underlying cause of COVID-19, but 5G is documented to have serious negative effects on the immune system, rendering the body systems to fail to do what they've been designed to do, which is to self-heal. Many people are unaware of the long-term damage caused by microwave radiation as well as the fact that this technology even exists. The blood-brain barrier, which protects our brains from foreign substances, is very important, and once damaged, will allow for injury. Exposure to microwaves and radiation both break down the BVB. Our dependence on Western medicine, global technology, and global profit are moving us away from the goal of sustainability as a state, and it won't stop here. Asia is already working on 6G technology for rollout in 2030. If we employ 5G, we're going to keep going forward, and we're going to move to 6G. And who knows what will happen, even if we even have people here to experience that. I admonish you to reconsider the decision to deploy 5G in Hawaii. It is not as simple as turning off a light switch or leaving the room or putting your phone in airplane mode. 5G is a blanket technology that will affect everyone and every nook and cranny of our state, from the tiniest embryo to the eldest kapuna. Mahalo for your time in Kukua. Again, my name is Jackie Gomes, and I support Resolution 678-20 to stop 5G.
Thank you, Ms. Gomes. Scott, your next testifying, Konah.
Next testifier is Yoav Melamed, in support of Resolution 278-20. State your name for the record.
Aloha, I'm Yoav Pono Melamed. Aloha, Honorable Chair, council members. Thank you all for your time today. Thank you, Councilmember Matt, for bringing forth this important resolution and allowing us all, inviting this conversation to be had here. Very brave of you, and we support you. I stand here today for my children, for my kapuna, for Hawaii. In the 4G world, signals from the cellphone towers can reach for many miles, whereas in the 5G world, the amplitude is much higher so to allow much more data to travel, but the wavelength is shorter, so signals do not travel as far. Wireless antenna will then have to be placed in closer proximity to pick up the signal. Due to this densification of antenna, we will all live next to a cellphone tower. Whereas now, some of us can choose to live far away from a cellphone tower or put our phone on airplane mode when it's not in use so as not to be exposed to this harmful radiation too much. Once 5G is rolled out, we will all be robbed of that freedom of choice. We will all be exposed against our will 24/7 to this harmful radiation. According to a petition opposing the rollout of 5G, signed by over 26,000 scientists, the evidence that radiofrequency radiation, wireless radiation, is harmful to life is already overwhelming and well-established. The FCC, unfortunately, is a captured agency. It is run by members of the industry it is meant to regulate. They do not have a single biomedical professional on their staff. The FCC's so-called safety limits haven't been updated since the 1990s. It's recently decided against updating those safety limits. You can see public record of nearly 2,000 testimonies, among them 400 doctors, urging them to update those limits. These limits are based on the assumption of the thermal effect that says, "If your tissue does not heat up like in a microwave oven, there is no concern for your health." Fact is, there is a substantial amount of evidence showing effects well before heating of tissue occurs, the harmful effects of non-ionizing radiation. Many places are issuing moratorium on 5G or banning it outright, like the entire nations of Belgium, Slovenia, and Croatia, nearly 100 municipalities in Italy, regions of Switzerland, and over a dozen counties in Ireland. Hundreds of other municipalities, many in the US, have imposed severe restrictions or delays on the rollout of 5G due to these concerns and demand safety studies, like in this resolution. Let's all join these places around the world. We are not guinea pigs, and we demand to preserve our freedom of choice. We do not want to be chronically exposed to harmful radiation without our consent at all times. Mahalo for protecting us. Thank you so much. Aloha.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Mr. Melamed. Renee, here in Hilo, next testifier, please.
Okay, Julie May Stitz. Hello, my name is Julie May Stitz, and I am here to support Resolution 678-20. I feel it is absolutely reckless to move forward without independent research. Independent because we definitely need a group of people to research this without an agenda. And we need to understand clearly the risks involved with 5G for our people and our home. We should also explore alternatives because there is always great other alternatives when we look, such as fiber optic, which is already working great for a lot of people here on the Big Island. So again, I just want to conclude with saying that I support this resolution, and I care about all of us being safe here. And we should all look at the possibilities of what 5G could do to all of us before we even think about continuing with moving forward with 5G. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next testifying, Konah.
Our last testifier here in Konah, Marlies Lee, in support of Resolution 678-20. State your name for the record and proceed.
My name is Marlies Lee. I'm in support of the Matt's resolution. I'm from Switzerland. I do love a cellphone. I call my parents. I have them on camera. I see my parents in Switzerland, and it works right now. I don't need 5G. I don't want to pollute my neighborhood with ugly cell towers. I want to keep Hawaii beautiful, healthy. We have fiber optics already. There's money out there that helps us implement fiber optics. It's safe. It's way faster than 5G. It's secure. It's hard to hack. We don't want that. And then if you do 5G, there's more satellites in the sky. We pollute the skies with satellites. That's not good. We don't see the end of this. And with kids in school, I saw a grandpa in the park looking at his cellphone, not at his grandchild playing on the playground because everybody is attached to these same phones. And if you make it easier that we can use them everywhere, we not talk anymore with each other. So I'm really sad. You can plug in the computers in schools. You can have fiber optics in schools. Don't make the kids walk around with the cellphones all the time. Attach them to a cable. Limit the time they're on the cellphone. We really don't need 5G, and not in Hawaii. The tourists don't need it. They can come here and relax, and we're children. Keep Hawaii beautiful. I came here. I left San Jose. I lived there for 30 years. They put fluoride in their drinking water in 2016, when we know it's so dangerous. And I came here, and I thought Hawaii is healthy and beautiful. But now I have to really stand up and say, "No, no 5G, no ugly cell towers in Hawaii." Thank you so much, Matt. Thank you. Mahalo.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. And Scott, just to confirm, that was your last testifying, Konah.
That is correct. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Back to Hilo.
Okay, next is Jurnee Willis.
Aloha and good afternoon, County Council. My name is Jurnee Willis. I am here in support of Resolution 678-20. I also want to personally thank Mr. Konalee Kleinfeldter for being a leader and standing up with this topic and bringing it to the council's attention. I wrote a couple notes. I'm going to try to stay on track. I know I'm being timed. But I wanted to mention the man who's not in favor of this, stating that there is no long-term studies. And like the previous testimony, the previous testifiers stated, there is no long-term study. We are the long-term study. And I think that everybody who's showed up today in support of this resolution does not consent to being a long-term study. I believe 5G is to help facilitate the expansion of artificial intelligence. SpaceLink, which is Tesla and Elon Musk's adventure into the space world, they got FCC approval to launch up to a million satellites. So even if we limit our exposure here on the Big Island as far as towers are concerned, we still have to worry about the radiation coming from the sky. So you can't run, and you can't hide. And to me, that just sounds like a horror movie. That sounds extremely scary. I believe technology can and always will fail. There's always issues going on lately. In the last month, I've had lots of power outages, you name it, with all of this overload on the servers and the internet, people at home. We know how we can experience delays. Technology will always fail. I believe we're being conditioned to transition to electronic everything, even though it's found extremely unsafe and a huge worry for cyber attacks, fraud, and identity theft. I believe Hawaii must be a leader. Being out in the middle of the Pacific, we have a choice, and/or at least we should, whether we implement this technology. I believe we should protect our ecosystem and all biological beings. I personally believe I'm experiencing symptoms related to electromagnetic radiation in my home. I've reached out for help, and my concerns fell on deaf ears. I live in a town, Pepekeo, which is like the most densely and heavily populated community along the Ha'umakua coast, and there is a huge death tower on Alalakon. I know my time is being cut short, but my whole thing I came to testify it for is to say that you've already heard about the health dangers. My question is, who's going to be held accountable right now? The FCC, the DOH? Nobody in the state of Hawaii is monitoring any of these towers that are being erected right next door to where people live. They're being put on top of people's apartment buildings. It states right at the base of the tower that is harmful to humans, and you're putting it on top of rooftops where people live, and they don't have a choice. And I believe that we should always have a choice. And I wish I could go on and on because this is really a passionate subject of mine, but I know my time is up, and I just want to ask that you guys vote in support of this resolution because we must be leaders, and we demand better, and we deserve better. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Willis.
Okay, next up, we have Laura Acasio.
Hello, thank you for hearing my testimony. My name's Laura Acasio. I live in Hilo. I wanted to really appreciate Matt Kleinfeldter for bringing this resolution to the county. The FCC and its negligence does not speak for me, nor for my family or many, many people that I'm in relationship with. So therefore, it's so important to be sitting here looking at you folks today because local government is the closest to the people. There's so much out there with the federal government, even the state government, that feels very far away. And so it's very important for you folks to take this consideration, being that nearly every single one of the testimonies so far has been in support. I am in support of Resolution 678-20. I'm deeply concerned for the health implications of 5G, both the known and unknown, because there are known health implications, negative health implications, and also, like has been stated before, the long-term effect. No. I have my own opinion on that. However, it's been studied and noted by many countries and scientists, doctors across the world that there are many negative health effects. So please take that into consideration and research more after this resolution is passed, so we can get clearer before we go ahead with the cart before the horse, especially in proximity to schools, populated communities, because we cannot choose the exposure. For example, if I'm smoking cigarettes, I'm making that choice to inhale that in my lungs and cause myself health impacts. However, if it's out in the ether, it's in the air, it's in our atmosphere, it's bombarding us whether we like it or not. We can't choose. Therefore, that's the importance of this resolution in that you're listening to the constituents which you serve tell you their deep concerns about it. So I appreciate for you listening deeply to that. That's pretty much it. I guess, in conclusion, I think about environmental impact statements and the importance of them and why they've come about. And I feel like this is something, for example, it checks our the environmental health and cultural effects prior to rolling out things. And I think this is something that we look at in order to place that, those studies ahead of the technology. Thank you for listening, and have a beautiful day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Acasio.
Okay, next up, we have Rachel Short.
Perfect. Sholha, everyone. I'm Rabbi Rachel Short. I am a mother and a rabbi here on the Big Island. I actually know many of you. It's nice to see you again. I am proud to be a leader here in our community. I don't stand up for just anything. It is rare that you see me use my voice as a rabbi, use my pulpit for anything political, or stand up for something unless I truly believe that I am called to do so. I strongly, strongly... I strongly, strongly am in support of Resolution 678-20. And I believe that this is bigger than you or I could ever understand, that I'm here to stand up for the sacred. We do not understand what we are going to do by moving forward with 5G towers. As a mother, I'm concerned about the help for my daughter, the future generations, and the generations to come. As someone who loves the island of Hawaii and the people on the island of Hawaii, I'm deeply concerned about the environmental impact it's going to have, from construction to the economy, from what's going to happen to our natural resources and land. So I strongly urge us to just stop and take a step back. Things are really out of balance right now in our world. If we even back up and look from a spiritual perspective, I can't help but get spiritual. It's who I am. But this is one of those times that we are being called to just stop. There is something bigger than this. The last thing we need to do is give away any more rights, put any more radiation out there. We're seeing what's happening to our worlds as things have slowed down from coronavirus. The last thing we want to do is continue to put more radiation, electromagnetic frequency, or move forward on things where science has medically come forward and said enough is enough. This is going to damage our brain cells. We're totally unaware of the long-term effects of this. So I feel very called to stand up and say that Hawaii Island deserves better than to move forward with 5G without an abundance of more research and more understanding of the true implications of what this is going to do to our island, to our land, and to our people. This is totally unnecessary. We don't need it. If you live on the Big Island of Hawaii, you are fine right now in terms of internet. Even all the way up in Mountain View and Ka'au, they're still able to be connected. The price we're going to pay for this is not worth it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rabbi Rachel.
Thank you.
Okay, Chair, that was our last testifier.
Okay, thank you, Renee. Scott, just checking in with you again. No more testifiers in Kona.
Yeah, that's correct. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Closing public testimony at this time. Mr. Clerk, when you are ready, if we could move forward with business of today, starting with order resolutions.
Resolution 678-20 calls upon the telecommunications companies and public utilities operating in Hawaii County to cease the build-out of 5G wireless infrastructure until such technologies have been proven through independent research and testing to be safe to human health and the environment, introduced by Mr. Connelly Lee Kleinfelder.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to forward to the council with a positive recommendation?
Motion to forward Resolution 678-20 to council with a positive recommendation.
I have a motion on the floor by Mr. Connelly Lee Kleinfelder, second by Ms. Poindexter. Mr. Connelly Lee Kleinfelder, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Matt Connelly Kleinfelder. I'd like to start by saying that Resolution 678-20 has a nice number. I like six, seven, eight, and I like numbers. It has nothing to do with existing cellphone infrastructure and only to do with the deployment of 5G technology, so we don't get confused in our talking points later on. We do not need 5G in order for our cellphones to work, and we have further options that address connectivity and increases in connectivity in our county. As a side note, I learned that Maui County is having a similar discussion this very moment, actually, today, July 7th, regarding 5G in the county of Maui. Over the past year, I have been bombarded by calls and emails from citizens voicing their concerns over deployment in our county and state of 5G technology. I have been also involved in some of the cellphone towers, and Mikey has been very helpful in the discussions on what rights we do and don't have as a county. In light of other counties, states, and countries limiting the rollout of this technology, residents around the island asked me to put this legislation forward to address the public safety concerns inherent in this new technology. I do appreciate the concerns of opponents of the resolution, including the telecom lobbyists, capital consultants from Oahu. My reply is simple. There has been no study to date that shows that technology is safe. I am concerned for the safety and well-being of our citizens. I am concerned for the densely populated areas like schools and neighborhoods where 5G deployment will be as frequent as every 250 feet. That's about every three houses. I look forward to discussion today. I understand that Mikey from planning is here, and I think Corporation Council has a member here to answer any of our legal questions as well. Now, Mike, if you could come up, and I do appreciate you being here. Sue Lilo asked that we move this to planning today instead of public works, which I found interesting, given that public works is going to be at the center of our memorandum of agreement to allow the county to enter into an agreement with different telecom providers for the use of our poles as 5G sites. So, thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Have we implemented 5G in our county yet, sir?
Based on communications from the larger ones like Verizon and, I should say, Michael Yee Planning Director.
Thank you.
Based on communications with Verizon and let's say AT&amp;T, they have not implemented 5G on the island yet. To my knowledge, there's no 5G on the island yet.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that. And then it looks like we have other counties that have, yes?
I don't know about other counties.
Okay, yeah. I guess my concern would be that we're being used as the guinea pigs for other places in the country. That does concern me.
I would confirm, yes, you're right in that. They have approached DPW about the small cell issue on stuff, but that's not my jurisdiction.
Understood.
I would confirm that's what I certainly know about.
Yeah, thank you. That's why I was interested to see why we moved the planning today, but that's okay. You are here. That's the main thing. How does our county interact with providers who want to install 5G networks?
I would say right now, it's not necessary for 5G, but in terms of infrastructure for cellphone towers has certainly been the primary, you know, flashpoint in that many people believe that these towers that are being proposed will be used someday for 5G. It's certainly a potential. Again, if you know the technology, it's not necessarily going up on these large cellphone towers, but that certainly becomes the issue. And I think the simplicity of it has been that we, the FCC Telecommunications Act of 1996 restricts us having to not issue permits for health reasons around telecommunications cellphone towers. Okay, and so when we get a cellphone tower application for a planning commission, I certainly make a recommendation to the commission. It's up to the commission to make a decision. So I don't want to sit there and say I have the power to say yea or nay to a cellphone tower.
Before we get too far into this part, sorry to cut you off.
No, go ahead.
All right, we're talking about cellphone towers now. And then, so you're saying 5G can be put on a cellphone tower? Or, because I was under the assumption it came on these smaller poles within, you know, county rights of way, which is why we discussed the MOA two weeks ago.
Correct. That's my basic knowledge of it. I think the fear has been that these larger cellphone towers are going to implement 5G on them. I'm not sure, like I said, I can't confirm or deny whether or not that's what the cellphone tower companies plan to do.
And then, I guess something that we talked about before was, do they have to come back to the county to ask permission if they upgrade technology on some of the towers? If we were going to go down that route?
And generally, no. That wouldn't be our jurisdiction to determine, you know, whether or not 4G or 5G is appropriate is not our jurisdiction to make that determination.
So a tower is up, anything can go on the tower?
Generally speaking, from planning aspect, yeah, we don't control that.
And that's why we're here today, we can discuss it, yeah. Yep, yep, yep. You know, there's, so we come down, we're talking about this Federal Telecommunications Act.
Matt, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I don't mean to interrupt. The clerk just informed me that we might need to do a reset so that we can get our captioning back. Is that okay?
Yeah.
That way folks have all access to this conversation.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, great. So we're in recess. Thank you.
Act, yeah? Did I say that right?
Correct.
Thank you. 1996. It's 2020, so it's 24 years old. So 24 years ago, the feds got it together and wrote an act, or the FCC wrote an act to, you know, describe how we go forward as a nation in telecommunications rollout, different technologies. Before we even invented 2G, we wrote an act describing how we go forward. But now we're sitting three generations past where we were when that bill came about. And that was when, I think, I think it's going back to the timeline, there wasn't even a flip phone yet when we wrote that telecommunications act. That was like when the first ones my grandparents had, which was that huge bulky cellphone you stuck against your head. Or people, people that may be on this council right now would have had that technology. No, just kidding. So, given the history on that, you know, I have some concerns that it's outdated and that they weren't, they could not possibly have seen how far ahead we'd be now with technology. So I'm just putting that out there. But, you know, a lot of, a lot of people today, as well as myself, I was under the assumption that we had no power to discuss anything regarding the rollout of technology on wireless telecommunications industry. But upon reading this, this act, this section does give us the ability as a state to impose requirements that are necessary to protect the public safety, general welfare of our citizens. That's in Section 253B. So that, in my eyes, and then maybe Corporation Council, we have wonderful timing today, Joe, maybe could enlighten us as to whether we do have say here, and we're not just at the the pole of the companies to tell us where we're going to put these new devices. That's really where the basis was to this resolution. I try not to do things off the cuff, but I think we do have a say in what we do here. And, you know, speaking on behalf of the citizens who are concerned, we're outside and everyone in Kona, and of the 150 testimonies we got in support of the resolution, I just want to make sure they're listening to our constituency.
So, yeah, I'll reserve comment on 253B for Corporation Council to address that. I will say, yes, Telecommunications Act of 1996, you don't have to convince me that it's outdated. It's also federal law, and as planning director, I have limited ability to move within the confines of how I have to act. And, you know, I have to strike the balance between advising the commission to act lawfully within the codes that we have to act within, while protecting the county from, you know, litigation, appeals, which we already see just on a cellphone tower, not even for 5G. We see those appeals. And so, you know, it's a tough balance. I would love that the feds, Congress, you know, revises the telecommunications act. There's no doubt that would answer and save us a lot of problem time, hopefully, if they were to do that.
Okay.
But we know how, right now, federal government seems to be dysfunctional, so I'm not sure that's about to happen real soon in the timeline that we're looking for. So it leaves the question over what, which is what you're fishing for, what ability do we have to understand what are the safety, you know, hazards with this? You know, I have the same question. I think people may think that I just haphazardly recommend a cellphone tower, but I have a wife that's born and raised here. I have elderly in-laws here. I have a five-year-old growing up here. So I care just as much as anybody else whether or not this is safe. But until I, as planning director, receives, you know, the authority to be able to weigh in differently than a favorable recommendation, I have to also watch out for county resources. If we want to take an action that goes against federal law, that's a big deal. And most people don't have to live with that consequence of having to fight that fight. And if I make that from a planning decision point of view, I'm the one having to pick up that fight. And so I think we have to be thoughtful, what you're trying to do, understand the options we have to push back. I'm not an expert on it. You know from my previous recommendations that if it's on health reasons, I'm not going to lean that way because of the Telecommunications Act. Planning has certainly pushed back on cellphone towers around safety issues, around fall zones, proximity to other residences, and we try to leverage that as much as possible, try to place it on a site. But we have limited ability in terms of how we can push around too much on a cellphone tower.
I think you also touched on co-location on existing towers versus building new towers. But again, this is more regarding 5G. And the only reason you're saying this is because 5G could be implemented on large cellphone towers without any county jurisdiction at all. Okay. Joe, if you could come up, please. There's a real basic question about this Federal Telecommunications Act and this Section 253B. And I don't know if you have had time to review it. You may have already and have a better understanding than I do, being that you have the background that I do not.
Good afternoon, Joseph Camilla Miller, Corp. Counsel. Thank you, Councilmember Connelly Lee.
Just call me Matt.
Kleinfelder. You know, it's been so long since I saw your name. So, so let me address it this way, because I know that there had been a lot of testimony. And it just, it's just my understanding of just the RF issue that we have now. So it's an issue that's been with the FCC for a while. Back in 2013, you know, they really started to look at this particular issue. And during that time, you know, there was some information, dealing with some of the studies that people have been dealing with right now, that they testified about. And basically, the FCC disagreed and then moved forward with their decisions. So actually, I think I got to take this off, because I'm having a hard time talking and breathing.
Okay, we'll wear ours. You can take off yours.
Yeah.
That's been an interesting point about the community, too, that wearing a mask, if you have existing conditions, can be difficult.
I brought the wrong mask, that's all. Sorry about that. Anyway, so, and that's why we have this controversy today. You know, I mean, it's something that was dealt with back in 2013. So when I came back as a Corp. Counsel back in around 2017, you know, there was legislation being proposed already, dealing with this issue. And it took about a year, at least for something to be finalized and passed. So you see the state basically on board now, you know, with as to how much jurisdiction or authority the county has in this area. And basically, when we talk about the RF issue, we have none. Even if you see what you see, as long as the FCC has done its role, although some might see it as being very limited and being specious, you know, nonetheless, they did do something back in 2013. So that's kind of where we are today. You know, there's really, we can't do much with the RF. Try to have more studies. But there is something that we can do, maybe, and that's something that we're looking at, is if we allow a 5G equipment up on a tower, nothing prevents us from perhaps asking the telecommunications company to say, well, if you install it, then we want to make sure that you get to a test on it so that we can satisfy the people of this county that it's safe. So that's something I think that we can do, and I think we're moving in that direction. Whether we can do more, I think I have to work with planning and maybe public works a little bit more.
Okay. Yeah, just from our last conversation, not the previous council meeting to this, because that was the finance, the special finance meeting we held, but the one prior because that was the, uh, the finance, the special finance meeting we held, but the one prior to that, uh, we discussed, you know, the MOA that was written by Corporation Council, I believe, in Sue Lilo's office to let, I believe that was AT&amp;T work within county rights of way to install equipment. And they had outlined what kind of technology they were going to use, which did list 5G. And, um, their goal was to sign an MOA with us to use our, our utility poles and whatever else lies within a county right of way. Um, but what I found interesting is that we do have, um, an ability to decide on the location of the equipment. Um, but it sounds like we can also, just by gauging this one section, two fifty-three B, that we are able to impose requirements that protect the public safety and the general welfare of the constituency. And that's where I feel like we actually do have a small amount of power as a county to say, if you don't meet, you know, or at least supply documents to say this is safe. And, and, and that, they have to have some credentials behind that.
Yeah, so that's why, like I mentioned.
And it's a very basic ask, you know, like, can you please provide documents that, that protect the people of this nation and here specifically of Hawaii County? And make sure that there's, that there will be a, a safety component with any new technology put in. That's important. I think in, any, any other thing you're going to do, you have to do that. I mean, if we do a large project, EIS has to be done. There has to be some kind of body of proof that what you're doing is not going to harm anyone or the environment or anything else. So I don't feel like we're overstepping. We're not preempting any law, but we are definitely doing our part in taking care of the constituents of Hawaii County.
Yeah, and, and that's why I mentioned that I think we're going to take the, the extra step that we're trying to do is to have the tests to make sure that whatever is being, um, transmitted, um, you know, is safe.
Yeah, and it's, it's more the frequency that we're talking about. You, you talk about 1G, 2G, 3G, 4G, 5G. It sounds like we're just taking normal steps up, but what we're talking about is an increase in the, the waveform being emitted from that device.
Well, you know, there's, uh, there's different, uh, type of 5G, get the slow one and get the fast one. Um, so, so, so there's something that we have to kind of, uh, look at because maybe, maybe the, uh, maybe, maybe the frequency is not as harmful from what people might think. So, so, so that's something that we have to check up into.
Yeah, and we, and we do understand here that we have an incredible need for connectivity. There's, you got it written down, six hundred, six hundred billion dollars in two thousand eighteen for federal grants for fiber optic broadband service upgrades. And then two thousand nineteen, five hundred and sixty-three million dollars from the FCC for broadband fiber again, mostly for rural upgrades in our communities. My district is in incredible need for, you know, upgrades to our connectivity, but it does not mean that we have to have 5G to make those upgrades. And I do wonder, you know, are we going to see any kind of cost benefit when it comes to our bill? If we do implement this technology? I would guess, no, we're going to get, probably a spike in our bill for the increased service. So in a lot of ways, you know, I, I have, I have some worries about this on my own. Okay, thank you. I'm going to yield to my other council members. Uh, I appreciate you both being here and answering questions and for this discussion.
Thank you. Uh, I want to give ladies an opportunity in Kona, uh, to ask any questions or make comments.
Not at this time. Thank you. Can you check back with us?
Sure. Anyone here in Kilauea?